All right, so fiscal year budget development.
So again, you had the preliminary budget presented to you in December. I expect you have memorized every page since then, a lot of detail, a lot of materials. But it would be helpful if you have some preliminary thoughts or areas of concern or questions, it would be good to flush some of those out so that we can get back to you with more details and perhaps need for more data if that is helpful. So I'm interested in hearing from folks what areas of the budget that you may have concerns about or that you want to take a deeper dive into. And obviously, I've highlighted a few key areas, public safety staffing, the school budget, we just finished a round of discussion on that, and finalizing wages for '24. Those are three outstanding areas that I know we need to have further discussions and make some final decisions on. But beyond that, if there are other areas that you have concerns about or particularly interested, it'd be helpful knowing that.
I'll bring mine in when I meet you about the other two things.
Yeah, that's fine.
Did anybody have anything specific they want to discuss right now or meet with Greg?
Yeah, I just might bring up in the safety budget with the police, I'm trying to get my head around head count associated with the salary budgets. Seems to be very similar from one year to the next, and I'm not sure where the dispatch head count was and where it is. Is that still in the budget for 2024 or is that removed?
The dispatch salaries are removed. So that's why you see the police budget salary basically being level funded. Actually, it dropped a bit because of that.
Well, it dropped just a little bit, and that was a three or four head count person, people count, right?
Yeah, I think, Greg, what we had discussed when we met jointly with FinCom was that we should have some, we should claim the savings that we project.
Exactly.
And I suggested a waterfall chart. I still think a waterfall chart would be a good way of showing that. But we have to claim those savings and understand where they went because those heads are going to be gone.
Because, yeah, you said that show what the savings were.
It shows what the savings is.
The whole story, not just the spending of the savings.
That's right, yes. You have to show the puts and takes. And if you need any examples of that, let me know, but it's a standard thing. I'm sure the FinCom people know what that is.
That was really the driver behind that. I'm trying to figure out where that several hundred thousand dollars went.
Exactly.
And what did you have to?
And I think it's important to John's point to have the public safety budget. If they were all under the police department, then the police department should show that savings. I believe that the prior select board made it very clear that those savings were not necessarily going to stay in the bucket where they were being claimed. And so I think that's the point here. If the, you know, if the chief is using some of that money already, that's, you know, that's a board decision. So along those lines, I think it would also just be helpful, the questions that you raise, Greg, you know, are there services you feel are not providing high value? Are there specific services that could be delivered less expensively? I expect the town department heads to come to us with answers to those questions. Okay, that's their job to identify services that are underutilized. So when I, when we go to these finance meetings on Thursdays, I'm going to be looking for what are the benchmarks and which services in your area are underutilized because everybody's got something. And these days, every penny counts. And so I would like to see their thoughts that we can then take a look at and see, you know, see what's what. Anybody else?
One more question. Again, in safety, just in the harbor area, I did note a one-liner here. There's no protection for the three vessels in wintertime. I guess they're just hauled up to the, I guess, the water treatment plant, and they sit there in the lot. Are they shrink wrapped at all or is there something? I saw that there was the expectation or hope there'd be some sort of storage facility, but shrink wrapping works pretty well. You know, Greg?
Yeah, let me talk to Byron about that.
Okay, I understand he's lobbying for a roof, but shrink wrapping is not very expensive. And there's a lot of boats in white every winter everywhere.
And?
Oh. And there's a lot of plastic that goes into the trash.
Yeah, true.
And the roof stays.
To be used again and again and again.
Right. It's a, it's a cost issue too, you know, shrink wrapping's a few hundred dollars.
Well, that's for the one time, but the long-term effect. Okay. But that's, we can get that information from Byron. All right, so did you want?
I wondered if we had, that should go on our list of actions so we don't forget about it.
Good idea.
Yep, so this is Harbor Master, not under Harbor Master Plan, Upgrade Harbor Master Plan, right.
It's on the gift wrap your boats.
Harbor Master Equipment. All right. So this came at 2:03, and we want to, could we possibly have that for the next meeting? The information on that?
Yeah, that's an easy one.
Yeah, that's just a question, right?
Yes, it is, but it's now on there because, you're right, we need to continue doing this. I love this. All right, so we reviewed goals, discussion, action steps, process for finalizing some action steps and timeframes. Now we're on to MBTA zoning. That's where.
So you should have a memo from me which outlines the basics of what the state is requiring. And what the state is requiring is the town of Manchester to put roughly 37 acres in a zoning district that would allow housing by right with site plan review. And site plan review can, restrictions can be put on, but they can't be unreasonable. And the goal is that the state wants more housing within a half a mile of the MBTA station. I have had several discussions, given the uniqueness of Manchester and the fact that the train station is on filled highlands. I've had several discussions with the state, and they continue to believe that there will be train running in 20, 30, 40 years. And this is something that the state is mandating. The, there's, the carrot, I guess, is the housing. The stick is that if we don't put something in place, the state will eliminate housing authority funds and will prevent us from pursuing Mass Works and Housing Choice grants. So by the end of January, we are to fill out an action plan, which I am working on now, with ultimately the goal of adopting zoning by December of 2024. And so ironically, there is no requirement for actually production of this housing. But the state is adamant that this is what they want.
So we've outlined some preliminary timelines. As Betsy indicated, we have, basically, we have a two-year window to answer a lot of questions, to collect data, answer a lot of questions, and have a lot of community debate on this topic. It's a topic that already has garnered quite a bit of opinions and debate in town already, and no doubt that will continue as we, as we go through this process. As you have talked about in previous meetings, we'll be doing parallel tracks, looking at what it would take to comply, and also what are the ramifications of not complying? Not just foregoing some of the grant possibilities, but, you know, what sort of impact does that have on the community in terms of our demographics and the types of housing that we currently have or don't have? So it'll be a very important and, I think, dynamic process over the next, over the next two years. The kicking it off hopefully will be your joint meeting with the planning board next week. So after you have your session about choosing a new planning board member to fill a vacancy, you'll move into a discussion about the timelines. We'll have, refine the timelines and the narratives and the overviews. We'll have that all available to folks the Thursday before this, we'll have it ready hopefully this Thursday to get out to everybody in preparation for Monday's meeting. So as I said, this will, this will be a major focus. It'll take a lot of energy. It'll take gathering a lot of good information. For example, we already have on the books zoning that allows by right the conversion of a single-family home into three, three units in the general district. And so that's on 6,000 acre, 6,000 square feet. So that's a density of 21 units per acre, whereas the state is requesting a minimum of 15 units per acre. So in theory, we are already meeting that requirement with that one area. It's not for new construction, so it doesn't fully meet the requirements of the new law. So we've had that on the books for a long time in Manchester, and we certainly haven't seen a huge proliferation of conversions take place. So there's those kind of facts that we need to get out. We certainly have multifamily housing in the village area that is upwards of, maybe as high as 40 or 50 units an acre if you were to project it out. So again, a lot of information to collect, a lot of data to share and to vet and to have what I hope will be a very robust community discussion. Does this make sense or not for Manchester? And that's, that's what we need to do over the next two years and take our time and be methodical and be deliberate about it and come up with a good solution that is, that fits Manchester.
Thank you. I would like, all of this is nice and clear. Betsy, thank you very much, lots of information. I did, on the projected timeline, one of the things Kathy had mentioned last time was also make, the projected timeline is specifically for going forward. And there's nothing that we're, we're making comment about if we don't go forward. And I think we need to have with these timelines, if we choose not to meet a deadline, what specifically that means for us.
I think maybe Tiffany may have already spoken with Susan Beck. I know Susan Beckman was helping Tiffany with some of the graphics. I think the graphics came from Tiffany. And a number of us had sent Tiffany some feedback on the timeline. And I think we just need to wait, Susan's got her hand up. We just may need to see another version.
Yes, yeah, she's, she's working on that.
Okay.
You'll see that new version in a couple of days.
All right. We talked about the next step. I just wanted to make sure that that is, that is a key element, I think, is to show that we are looking at not just the one option. Susan, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, Greg, Greg said it, we're working on it. We got that feedback loud and clear, so the next version, you'll see that.
Thank you.
Have we considered pushing up the town meeting vote to April?
Of '24?
Yeah. So that if it doesn't work, we get a second shot.
That's a good idea. Yep.
Not that the second shots always work, but.
Right. So do an April, yeah, do spring town meeting or the?
Or maybe have a town meeting in very early June.
Specific to this? Betsy?
We are likely going to apply for a MAPC grant to, for a couple of people to help us with some number crunching and mapping. I think it makes total sense to move this forward fairly quickly this year and see if we can do some form of educational program that leads to spring 2024 town meeting. So we do have a second bite at the apple.
Thank you. Good call, yeah.
My other question is, the historic district, the two historic districts have a lot of regulations about what can be built, particularly height. But does this, is the state willing to take into consideration our regulations to keep our historic district intact?
No.
Thank you.
Straightforward.
Really?
Sarah? Brayton?
Well, we don't need to get into the specifics of the program tonight, but I do think it's important that it's, it's a region-wide goal. And so the historic, if we can't meet the density requirements in the historic district, they wouldn't be able to be made up elsewhere in the overlay, in perhaps an overlay zone or something. But nonetheless, my point was going to be, I think if you think about this and you talk about it with people, as we talk about it with people, right now, this is a, yes, it's a mandate with a stick if we don't comply by the deadline. But nonetheless, it also is consistent with our master plan, and it is an opportunity to, the master plan set focus on the downtown and its character as well as its vitality. The master plan set focus on a diversity of housing. And so this is also an opportunity to meet some of those master plan goals. And so I think I would couch Betsy's comments as being factually correct, but in terms of tone, I would say, let's start with thinking of this as an opportunity that the state is twisting on a little bit to hurry up and do, but I think it has an opportunity for us to collectively think about what we want in the area, the 37 acres or so near the train station. So start with it as an opportunity to think about it, and then what might that be and what are the trade-offs? Because I think Greg's point also is that we're quite close. It's, it's not like we have single-family house districts throughout the entire downtown. We have a lot of area that has three-family allowed by right. We have, you know, more, as you said, more than the required density on some parcels, which we could rezone to allow that to be rebuilt, and that would come towards the average. So we're quite close, I think, compared to a lot of other communities, and it is an opportunity. And lastly, this is about zoning, and as we know, zoning does not necessarily mean it will get built.
So just a suggestion for communicating, Betsy and Tiffany, as we're creating collateral to inform the public about what the requirement is, you said it, it means we need 37 acres of by right multifamily zoning, blah, blah, blah. I'm envisioning like a fundraising thermometer, okay? The target is 37 acres, and once you get through the technical details, how close are we? You know, are we at 34? Are we at 20? It would be nice to have a visual that as we, you know, if our target is clear and we propose a change in zoning, hey, that'll take us from 20 to 32, and we just need a little more to go. That, that kind of visual can be very motivating and put what we're trying to do in a positive light as opposed to a negative light. So I would just think about that type of collateral, perhaps.
I think the visuals, sorry, John, I just think the visuals are really critical. Coil them down, make it very easy to see. John, what did you want to?
Yeah, so one thing that has always confused me in all of this stuff, I'm trying to understand, 37 acres, and the first time I saw 37 was when this memo came out. I knew the number went down. I didn't know what it went down to. That's 555 units based upon 15 units per. Now, to the extent that we meet those requirements with the housing that we already have, that gets subtracted from that 555?
Supposedly.
That's what, that's what that current state understanding, that's what we need.
I'm hoping that's the situation. We've got a lot of three-family zones stuck down in the general district that you start to look at it, and you can start to run the numbers up.
We need town council. This is where we need town council to weigh in.
It's a very, very important distinction.
Absolutely, because that's what I think we've been led to believe, but we need to know without a doubt.
Here, there's a little bit of information that has come out from the state. One is that each, if we zone a section, it has to be at least five acres. So we can't just say, this house is good, this house is good, this house is good.
It has to be contiguous.
Contiguous, five acres.
Five acres contiguous. We have to have 15 acres within the half-mile zone of the train station. And if you go to the town website and go to the mapping and turn on colors for flood zone, hurricane danger zone, and the historic district, which I now know doesn't matter, I guess, you, it's, finding scattered pieces of five acres is, is challenging in that area. But obviously, Greg and Betsy think it can be done. I'm going to be very interested to see when, you know, we come down to putting felt markers on, on a map.
Yeah, this has to be gone through lot by lot.
So this is where?
But it has to be in five-acre chunks.
Okay, so this is where, that's part of what is being looked at right now.
So I'm, I'm not sure that I think we need to get town council involved in this. I think we have a town planner who's very knowledgeable about this and can get to legal definitions, and that we shouldn't try and circumvent her.
No, 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 that was not my intention.
Well, okay, good.
But no, it's, Betsy?
Yeah?
Do you, do you know if that has been clarified, whether what we have counts or not?
I do not know the answer to the question, but I will find out the answer to the question.
Okay, because I, yeah, that is critical.
I think that there, you know, in looking at the town center, there's, so the closest comparable is the powderhouse apartments. On two acres, there's 29 units. So that's your density. And it turns out only about half that piece of property has been developed, so it's basically 30 units on an acre. So that's kind of the closest comparable. There are units in the center of town that have 13 units on a 6,000-square-foot lot. So clearly, there are areas in town that have significantly greater density, most of those units being built the turn of the century or a little later. I will find out, I'm in the process of digging. I will find out the answers to the question, and as I said, this is the first of many memos from me on this issue.
Because we don't know whether these issues are age-restricted or not, the ones that we have in place, and that's, that's a.
This conversation is confusing to me because it's my understanding a law is about the zoning, not the structures that may or may not be there. So I think the question is.
You have to comply.
Yeah, our zoning.
The zoning has to.
The zoning has to comply. It's irrelevant about what buildings may be in town right now. So as we go forward here, I really think it's important not to talk about existing structures if we can avoid it because I just think it adds to the confusion a little bit.
But the problem with that is some of our zoning already does comply.
Right, but we can talk about the zoning without talking about the buildings.
Talking about structures, I see. Betsy, what do you, do you agree with that?
Well, I think the issue is perception. When I first think of 15 units an acre in comparison with, you know, what I perceive as Manchester, that doesn't quite fit. But then if you do the digging, you realize that there are areas in town that have greater, particularly in the town center, that have greater density than that, much greater density than that. So I think my reason for bringing up examples is to say, okay, this, this property is X units an acre.
It provides the visual.
Yeah, and I think that's valuable. I would limit those examples to where they will help understanding as opposed to a liberal use of them because I think it diverts our focus to the fact, from the fact that there is absolutely no production required as part of this law. It is simply zoning changes. And so the more we talk about buildings, it makes people think they're going to be immediate, you know, I'm just, I just, it's not the same as 40B, and I think people get confused between production regulations versus zoning.
The focus really has to be on the size of the lots. All of downtown is three, is three units per lot. Now, if you've got 6,000-foot lot, you've got no problem. The math works. You've got 8,000-foot lots, that's fine. If you've got a 15,000-foot lot and it's still zoned in three-family, you've got problems. You're not going to make the math work. So you just have to go through each lot, what's the size? I know it's got a capacity of three, and see if the math works. That's really what has to be done. So it really has to be lot by lot, and you have to be able to add it all up and get to that 15 per acre overall.
Agreed. Okay, so with this, the board action is to announce the next steps. Greg? I believe what the next step, sorry, that we're waiting for is to actually get some of this.
So the next step will be for you, right, so the next step will be some revised overviews and proposed timeline, and then you'll be discussing that with the planning board at a joint meeting on Monday, the ninth. and then you'll be discussing that with the planning board at a joint meeting on Monday the ninth.
All right. Any other comments before we go to the harbor management plan? Betsy, did you have anything else?
Um, I do not right now, but I will be getting that to you.
Thank you very much. Sarah, you had your hand up. Did you want to say something before we move on?
Um, only in comment to Ann's, a comment or something to comment about flood zones and so forth. I think one of the things that can be included in future zoning is some resilience requirements, so elevated first floor, for example. Also, we could have requirements that maintain or allow or require, depending on what we decide, to have retail on a first floor with housing above it if we're interested in that as a downtown character-ish opportunity. So, my point is that these, this is an opportunity to include some things in addition to housing that might keep conversions of retail to housing from happening, for example, or, or vice versa, whatever, what it, um, it is, the zoning, zoning is more than just depth of the and it can have other requirements. Thanks, we'll look forward to next, next week.
Thank you, okay.
Excuse me, is there, is there a red dot near the chat?
No, it's, that's been there. I know, I keep looking at it, but that's an old red dot and I don't, I'm not seeing it. So, but thank you. Harbor management plan. So, um, the Harbor Advisory Committee. Greg, was the Harbor Advisory Committee as a whole preferring not to be responsible or did some members feel they didn't have a, a strong feeling one way or the other? Do you know?
I, I don't know if it was unanimous, but I know the majority preferred not taking the lead as a, as a committee of the whole.
All right.
So, so again, you know, you've, you've, you've committed to moving forward with the new Harbor Master Plan or Harbor Management Plan, whichever term you prefer. And the question really before us tonight is, you know, how best do we structure that? Do we create a task force, similar to the water task force, with representatives from various boards and committees, perhaps some at large? Or do we ask the HAC to set it up as a, as a subcommittee that they lead? So, one or two of them could lead a subcommittee where they would, again, reach out to different representatives from various boards and committees and maybe a few members at large. And in either case, I see this as a project where we would reach out to hire a consultant to help us complete this. UMass Boston has a, has a department that has done a number of, of plans like this and they would be a good, a good potential resource to tap into to help us develop our, our plan.
Does it make sense to have, give a committee or subcommittee before hiring a consultant?
It's, it's helpful because it's helpful to have that committee be involved in the selection process and, and blushing out the scope of work.
Okay.
Can I ask a logistical question? So, if the Harbor Advisory Committee did not want to drive this, let me careful how I phrase this, did they give you a reason why? Greg?
Um, so let me, let me try to recall. I don't know if they, how specific, but I would suggest that they were thinking this was a bigger project and they were feeling comfortable handling and that it does involve many different aspects and therefore many different players.
I had the same question because they are the Harbor Advisory Committee and while they don't necessarily have to be, as a whole, doing it, I, I think there definitely have to be member, at least a couple of members of the Harbor Advisory Committee involved.
To that point.
So, it's an area that, I'm sorry.
No, I'm going to say to that point, if they're reluctant to be involved, okay, then I, I think that a steering committee versus a subcommittee, a steering committee with a member or two from the Harbor, HAC, seems to make more sense. If they're unwilling to take this, take this as a project, then let's not thrust it on them and that's fine. I think there are enough people, I think, you know, maybe one or two members. Depending on how, how large a steering committee is going to be, I can see one or two members from the HAC.
So, that's my thinking as well. However, I would not leave the Harbor Advisory Committee in its current state. I don't think we should have two teams pulling on Byon's valuable time potentially with overlapping, you know, discussions.
Right, as long as they're not overlapping, but this is where.
Personally, if we, I, I, I would totally agree with Brian that I would not impose a project on, on people who didn't want to take it on, especially something this important, so I, I agree with that. However, I would advise we do something about the Harbor Advisory Committee, whether it be skinny it down, put it on pause and have Byon dictate what he needs from a Harbor Advisory Committee, so there aren't too many people pulling at him. You know, have them be more supportive as opposed to drive.
I would like to have them here. I'd like to have Harbor Advisory Committee, Byon and us in a discussion about this. And I, I think that's the only logical way to do it.
Maybe if the Harbor Advisory Committee doesn't consider it important enough for them to do, we ought to think about whether in fact it is, we do need, we seriously need a Harbor Master Plan.
That's exactly right.
I don't, I, I, I don't want to go putting words in their mouths. I don't know that they think it's important or not. That's why I want to have them here or them represented and Byon.
I think that's.
I, I, I think it's a matter of confidence. I, I don't, I don't think they're against the plan. I just think they're, they're looking at their internal skill set and say, this is way above my pay grade. I don't know where this is going, but I, I, I don't feel confident that I can manage all of these people, some of whom know a lot more than I do, perhaps, about, you know, we're putting on this, on, on this committee and I think it's going to be multidisciplinary, plus the consultant, and they feel unsure about being able to deal with that.
Have you actually spoken with some?
No, I, I, I just, well, I know some of the people on the committee and I think that's where things are coming from.
That's why I want to have, rather than supposition, or, or let's, let's table this to another meeting, perhaps February nine. I don't want to put this off too long, but I, I just, I would like to hear what their reasons are and, and then perhaps see where we go from there because they are our advisory committee and, and it's not that they have to be doing the head, the bulk of the heavy lifting themselves. That's what we hire a consultant for.
Yeah. What do we hope to get from the Harbor Master Plan? What, what is it that the board wants to see?
The, the use, my understanding, if I've got this correct, is that, and this was not necessarily that the board wanted this, but it came about from some of the people over on.
Norton's Point.
Norton's Point.
One guy on Norton's Point.
And it's the use of the different types of uses of our harbor and it's not just boating uses and long-term planning. So, I, I think that it's, it's not, again, just about boating.
Right. No, that's, that, I wasn't, I just, what, I don't know what we're looking for.
Fair enough.
So, I agree with you, Becky, that's what I heard based on the proposal that we heard from. You know, it's about what we envision using our harbor for because right now we've been asked to make some decisions about the harbor use, those expansion projects, et cetera, as an example, without having a vision about what we want the harbor to be. How much, you know, what percentage fishing, boating, harbor walk? You know, what, what is, what is the master plan for the harbor? We don't have a North Star, so to speak. So, we're making incremental decisions and we're going to wind up with the Seaport District, which, as the city of Boston, if they could do a redo, they'd probably have a master plan for that as opposed to the little convoluted stuff they got there right now. So, it, having a plan is usually helpful.
Greg, did you want to offer anything else on that?
You summed it up pretty well. I think it's a very good next step to have this discussion with the full HAC and, and put together a J plan.
And Byon, so if it's possible to get Byon Harbor Advisory Committee and probably even Todd involved?
Yeah, absolutely.
I'll be right with you, Charles, one moment, please. So, could we put that on the February sixth?
Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Houghton?
Hi, this is Chuck Houghton. I just had one question.
Could you just, I'm sorry, just give your address, please, Chuck?
Oh, sure, Fox, Fox Pastor Road in town. I'm, I'm just wondering if one of the things that people on the committee are afraid of is, are they, do they think they're being tasked with developing a whole plan? I would think initially that they'd want to just do a survey of what other people do and just summarize and see if any of the things that other towns are doing would be advantageous. That's not getting into like developing a whole plan.
Okay, thank you, yes, that's a, that's, that's a good, good, good point, so thank you. Okay, so we've got our next steps for that. We will see them hopefully February sixth, which brings us to the first reading of Select Board Policies, first reading correspondence. I did have a comment on that and there's a good timeframe that I saw. Did I miss that?
No.
Because I think that if, and, and is this, this is just specifically for the Select Board. This does not apply to any other boards, committees, anything like that.
The Select Board at our direct report.
So, I just think that it would be good to, if we have a, and it's not always easy, but I, I, I think if we're going to be doing this, then we should have a timeframe.
I think that's absolutely a best practice.
Okay.
Because some people expect immediate response to email. So, if we set the expectation that that's, that's not how email is used or written correspondence, if we get a letter, you shouldn't expect immediate response. So, we should discuss what is a, an appropriate expectation. Is it a couple of days, a week, just to let them know that?
Five business days.
Right, that kind of a thing. That's, that's a best practice to include that, to set that expectation.
And there are also people who say they want this entered into public record, things like that.
It's automatically entered into the public record if it's addressed to any of us.
If it's, yeah, well, yeah, if it's addressed to us at the, as a Select Board member and/or the official email. So, if someone emails you on your private email, but, but addresses you as Select Board member.
Yes, yes, I think that's actually covered in here. Where, where would you like to put?
This is primarily with, I guess, regard to getting back to.
Someone was emailed us.
Somebody who's emailed us. In terms of what's going on with sending it around to us internally, that's really all driven by that response.
Right, because it goes, and, and, and to that end, okay, you receive an email, you respond within the specified amount of time, that person replies back. Does the clock start again on that response time? I think these are things that have to be.
I, I think a response is a new email and, and we don't need to say, by the third message, we're tired of hearing from you and.
No, no, that's, that's.
I'm sorry, that was a joke.
No, I know, I know, and.
By the way, it would be the second message.
Truth and just, but hey.
Okay, each member of the Select Board, this is on the second page.
Yes.
Should acknowledge every, specifically to that member, say, within five business days?
I'd say ten business days, frankly, because some, if you're away on vacation or. No, I've got eyebrows on that one. You like five?
Yeah, I like five. There are too many people that would come back if they didn't hear from you in a week and say, hello?
If you're on vacation and you're getting email, if you're on vacation and you're not getting and you won't have access to email, set it up to forward.
Or away message.
An away message.
An away message.
I think the complicating factor is that as a municipality, we don't all have, you know, Debbie looking at our email. If I was in my corporate job, I'd have an EA who's monitoring my email while I'm on vacation and stuff like that. And that's just not available to us. So, I do think some provision for an out-of-message, you know, response should be set on your email so that a person will know when to expect a response, perhaps.
Yep, so within five days.
Five business, five business days, I think.
Yeah, five business days.
Or if you're going to have, not have access to emails, set your out-of.
Yeah, I don't think it necessarily needs to be forwarded if it's an urgent matter.
So, what, what I mean by an out-of-office message is if you're not going to have access to your email, you go on vacation, you put in the out-of-office message, I am not available, please contact so-and-so who is available.
Your, your, your email said.
Oh.
If you need immediate assistance.
You can teach me how to do that.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
So, okay, and I think specifically to that member, comma, within five business days.
Mm-hmm. And then something, just get out of town. I'm just trying to, there, there should also be something in the administrators admin, oh, bye.
So, yeah, this means Greg and, and Greg, this is, this is where five days and Greg gets, and Debbie get inordinate amounts of emails every single day.
Yes, but putting it off just means you've got two inordinate amounts to pay for the next day.
Yes, yep. But I, I think that, that we should ask them if five days is reasonable for them.
Five days is.
Business days? Greg, how's that work?
He can get.
Yeah, under normal circumstances, yes.
Yeah, and I, I'm just looking at perhaps clarifying when we say acknowledging every email, but of course our definition of written correspondence can be other than email. Let's face it, ninety-nine percent is email, but you can get other forms of correspondence.
Yep, yep.
So, you might perhaps modify and say not just email, but, or other written correspondence.
Has read the message.
Yep.
Okay.
Good question.
Yeah.
So, I, I, I thought the policy was really, really well done. This, it is relevant though only for written correspondence directed to a Select Board member. I thought I saw that phrasing in there, is that correct? So, for example, if we're on an email distribution that is.
CC'd.
CC'd to us or BCC'd to us.
Right.
Yeah, we don't have to, and it's sent to our private account, we don't have to move that to our town account and it is discussing town issues. discussing town issues.
There is one caveat in here. Well, I think I tried to clarify it. If you get a private message and then later in a discussion, you say, well, I've heard that and nobody else has seen what you, what you're referencing.
Right.
Oh.
That's
You can't say it.
You can't do that.
Right, right.
Either it has to be made public after.
So what about, there was one other scenario I had a question on. So if like a neighbor emails asking for time to discuss a particular issue or asks for an opinion on a specific issue, we should forward that?
If you think it's of interest, if you think you can handle it without involving the rest of the board, then go.
No, I, um, my question was, do I need to forward that to my town account so it is part of the public record? Even if I can handle it myself? Like my, one of my neighbors wants to talk about the beach parking or, you know, the Pine Street field, I just forward that to my town now.
It would be good to forward that to your town.
It's, it's public record anyway.
Right, right, yeah.
Any, any of your
Right.
correspondence, so it's, it, it, I think
That's what I thought. I just wanted to double check.
Just to have a clear
Yep.
trail and, and deliberate intent of keeping it.
Okay.
So this is not just select board, it's Select Board, County Administrator and Administrator Assistant.
Right, but the email has to be directed to us, not just us copied on something that somebody wants to talk about.
Right, exactly.
Got it, okay.
Unless it's sent to Greg and Debbie and says, please send to the board and I want to hear from a board member.
Yes, okay.
Okay.
Okay, if we put in, in the middle of that paragraph before, all acknowledgements shall include a disclaimer. When a member of the Select Board is unavailable to respond to email.
Does it email or?
Yeah, but you're not going to have an automatic response.
On your letter.
On your letter.
Yeah, exactly. That's why I stopped.
Yeah. When members of the Select Board are unavailable, they shall set an automatic response. Response stating when they should, they will be available. Okay, and we want to make it subject to the state's public record law?
Okay.
No problem.
Which I think it is anyway.
Right.
Well, and
What this is saying directly to the correspondent, that this is not a privacy, there is no expectation of privacy.
Yes. Absolutely.
Yeah.
There is no expectation of privacy.
Yeah, that was a good verbiage.
With those changes.
Do we have a motion to advance it to a second reading?
Someone.
Second.
Moved by Kathy Bellata, seconded John Round. Roll call vote, John Round.
Yes.
Brian Solacey.
Yes.
Kathy Bellata.
Yes.
Ann Harrison.
Yes.
Becky Jakes says yes, with immense thanks to you two on that.
Okay. Debbie, I will get you updated verbiage because I can read my handwriting, of course.
All right. Any liaison updates, John?
No, I think we've touched on everything in terms of some of the other stuff up, up, up on top, so I'm caught up.
Brian?
No, school vacation, no one was home.
Kathy?
Not on the planning board, but I did want to mention a couple of things on dispatch. So so I, I had a conversation with Greg after his last meeting with the dispatch team out in Middleton. And I believe Greg, we said that this month's meeting we'd be ready to talk about community outreach. You know, six months is going to go fast and we want to talk about pulling that in even earlier. It, it's not too soon to be talking about how we communicate to the, the town residents. So I believe Greg, we're asking the, the 911 team to show us a rough plan at the January 19th meeting.
Correct.
January 17th?
No, 19th, Thursdays. Their meetings are Thursdays.
Okay.
I, I won't be able to go to that because I will be out of the country, but I'll look to get on your calendar for the following week. And then we can, and maybe I'll touch base with you beforehand just to kind of talk to you about what we, we want to get out of that. But I think what we're looking for is, if I recall, Allison said that she had in her head a really comprehensive approach to community outreach and, and so I, I think she's probably got a really good template that, you know, we can work with her to adjust. But I think the intent would be to bring it back to the board at the earliest possible time after that January 19th meeting, which, which sounds like February 6th. So I think we want to target a conversation on the dispatch timeline and communication approach for February 6th. Greg, if you're in agreement with that.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay. That was it.
Okay. And Harvard Advisory Committee has not met since last time and I don't know if the board has. Yeah, so that's a bit. And you did talk about the school a little bit.
I talked about the school a little bit. At the con con is meeting right now.
Yep.
So.
Thanks for that.
And I, I will, I will follow up explanations of what they are doing to provide services. How they have looked at providing services in alternate ways that, that could affect their their deficit.
I didn't use that. So that brings us up to date on that. Next, we have consent agenda. The temporary vendor license.
I didn't actually see those in my package.
I didn't see those or the license renewals.
Yeah.
The actual for the common dictators. Do you have any idea how to?
I do not, actually.
Right. Right, usually.
Yes.
But it's not okay, so.
See, we're not hearing anything.
Yeah.
Try another microphone.
Yes, okay. No.
No.
Okay. So make sure your camera is host disabled. You know what? Let me see if Greg needs to turn it on from there. Greg, we're just going to have to deal with feedback for a minute. The, the computer here or the 1623 screen is not showing that it's connected to the host.
Okay.
Hard to concentrate on that. Hey Siri. Text Greg Fetter Spiel. There we go. All right. My apologies, everybody, you've been holding on for a few minutes. We'll try and get this sorted out. Happy New Year. I know, no, it's
It's a good texture microphone, but microphone's there.
Yeah, is it, and it's turned on?
Yeah.
Leave computer audio, no. Automatically join.
Yeah, that's what we did next time. Nope.
I mean, it's picking something.
And what's the other shit that you guys running into?
Well, they can't see.
There's no video.
This, this, we're supposed to have video on this.
And they have no video in the room five miles. Yeah.
Oh, wait.
No, you went to
Yeah. There we are. I wonder if we just close it out and try again? Yeah, I mean, it's the same thing, right? We did this again.
That's just something we're having computers.
On the, on the pressure.
Do we use every time? Let's try.
Oh, I forgot.
Who's on?
I'm not on this one.
Yes, just that's 50.
Yeah, so.
No, I'm doing some other stuff.
Yeah. Doesn't do anything.
Doesn't do anything. Oh.
There.
There you go.
All right, yay.
Do you, do you know what you did?
Do you remember how to do this again?
I don't know. It wasn't, we didn't
Just kept on tapping to get something right?
I think he did something.
I think he did something else, too.
Okay, there we go. Okay, apologies. Thank you, everybody, for your patience. It is 6:38 and I would like to call to order the Manchester Select Board Tuesday, January 3rd, 2023 meeting to order. We are being recorded both by 1623 Studios as well as by Zoom. We will invite public comment at different times. When we do so, please raise your hand. The chair will acknowledge you and please state your name and address. Any and all discussion should go through the chair just to keep things from derailing. First and foremost, are there any public comments on items not on tonight's agenda?
I'm not public, but I guess I am.
You are.
We voted
State your name and address.
My name is Ann Harrison, 13 Tex Point Road. I am curious because I thought the board of Select, the Select Board voted to raise speed limit on Pine Street and it hasn't happened.
We did and we were going to have DPW coming back today with an update. They didn't have all the information ready for that update to include the status on the speed limit changes. So we have them coming January 17th.
That, I don't think that's Ann's question. That's not my question.
Why haven't the
The signs have changed.
Why has been changed? We don't, I don't
I can follow up with, I can follow up with Chuck there and make sure that happens ASAP.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Procedure question? Do we need to
Open the meeting.
Do open the meeting?
Who's present?
Okay, roll call vote. John Round.
There.
Brian Solacey.
Yep.
Kathy Bellata.
Yep.
Ann Harrison.
Yes.
Becky Jakes. We have a full complement of the board. Thank you. Appreciate that. Any other items not on the agenda?
Um, I'm not sure whether it's on the agenda or not, but under governance, in Greg's memo, number two is revamp correspondence policy, but not communication policy. I think we begged off on communication.
You did, you did. It is correspondence.
Only.
But that's what it said here, first reading correspondence.
Yeah, but it says here, communication.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and, and communication is too big a thing
Right.
to be handled in a single policy. We can chip off pieces sometime, but
Yep. All right, well, we, that's correct, so we'll come back to that.
Is there, is there an action we need to record as a result of what you're bringing up, Ann?
We discussed that at the last meeting, so it should have, it should be noted that it's correspondence
Yeah.
and not communication, because that was clarified. Greg, did you have that?
That is correspondence, yes.
Correct, okay. Okay, thank you. Let's see. Chairman's report on the action items. We do have that the traffic calming DPW will be on the 17th. And along those lines, on the action items with
But just a question, procedurally, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yep, no, no, no.
So the, I think Ann had requested that the action item spreadsheet be included in our package. That wasn't done.
Wasn't here.
Right, so I just think that we want to do that. And just a question, as a result of this discussion, who is going to be updating the actions as we talk through them? Debbie, is that something you're going to do?
I can do that.
Okay.
Just wanted to clarify.
Okay, so excuse me, so if I wanted to update something on the action plan, I could, because I was going to destroy everything that was sent to me.
I saw that. I saw that you went in.
I tried. I was trying to change it. I'm just going to send it to you.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
But I did try.
I did notice that, that you did give it a go.
I was exhausted, so I had
All right, so regarding that, you, that's what, and we'll get back to her.
So, so Brian had the first action around the governance work. He did get back to Hope. Do we want to set a new date by when we just, we don't want to forget about her and we don't want this to drop.
I can continue to touch
So should we set about three months or something?
I told her, uh, we'd get together, you know, let's, I'll update her once we have this discussion, but we're still messing around with governance, so
We're going to have a discussion on that on the, the next meeting.
Okay, so
Would you like to push out the date to
Yeah, I'll touch base with her and just tell her that, uh, we will get back to her sometime mid-February.
At, at this point, because of, of how governance and boards and committees, I think that before we can actually take any action on that, it'll be, it'll probably be longer than that, but it's, it's nice just to let her know where we're
I'll tell her online.
Yeah, it's, it's more just to update the date as a tickler to remind us, you know, keep her in the
I will send her an email tomorrow just stating that we've discussed this and we will, it's still, and that we will, I will get back to her literally February with any updates.
Well, and the way, when we, if, the way that email might go out may fall under, well, not correspondence, yes, because it's just first reading, right?
Yeah, no, it has to do with the governance work, making sure we
Right.
get that far enough along. But, I mean, even if you set the date out three months, just as a, keep it on the action item list so we don't forget about her. Debbie, maybe just something, a, a further update so we don't forget.
I think that in this case, as in most cases, overcommunication wouldn't be a problem.
Absolutely.
Just touching base and saying, hey, we haven't, you know, we're just, I told you I'd get back to the first year. This is, uh, you know, we have an expectation that we'll have more formalized discussions.
Yep, doesn't hurt, absolutely.
And along those lines, you were going And along those lines, you were going to be doing community outreach.
Yeah, definitely.
That was nothing at all. No, I wanted to bring back Conversation Corner, Select Board Con, because that kind of, with the holidays, got dropped by the wayside. Did you have a comment on that?
It's kind of a long evening sitting there alone.
Yeah.
You were alone.
No, we, we had a very nice chat, and that was not a problem, but it was not necessarily an outreach to the public. And, and, and maybe we ought to think about how we're publicizing that.
Well, it was also the first time. I, I think that that's, it, it needs to be publicized, yes, better. And perhaps, as John and Brian have suggested, maybe we go to somewhere a little more public rather than, and, rather than, and, and my thought was to perhaps allow people, if they wanted to have more private chats over at Seaside One. However, they can always talk to us and make an appointment if that's the case. But I think maybe going out in a more public.
Yeah, well, I mean, I had suggested being outside. That wasn't a big, that wasn't popular with Brian for the wintertime. But my, my other, my other suggestion was, even though it's not so private, at least you start it in the Town Hall on Thursdays and see what happens.
Yep.
I don't know how many of these discussions are so private that people say, I'm not talking to you because what I want to talk about. I mean, you might as well give it a shot.
Absolutely.
But you're in traffic.
Yeah.
And I think we ought to probably move it there and see what happens, because people do walk in.
Yeah. Okay. Any other thoughts from the board on A, do we do it? B, where do we do it? The Conversation Corner.
Yeah, I, I, I would do it on the Thursday nights. And pick out.
Sounds fun to me.
Pick out, what is it, once, once a month?
Yeah, I, I think, I recall, there's a lot of Finance Committee meetings on Thursday nights over the next few months.
Every Thursday.
Right? So that might be a natural time to catch a few extra people. It doesn't hurt.
Yeah. So I do it Thursday. We have, we have the easel, right, with the design?
Yep, yep.
Put it out there on the front floor, and pull out a couple of chairs and a small table.
Yeah.
And a couple of cards.
Card table and.
Do you have a card table? I'll have to see if we do.
I have one I can bring from home.
If not, I do. Just let me know.
Okay, so.
So what's the action that you would like?
The action is, do we have a Thursday?
Yeah, let's pick a date here.
This month? And who would like to go sit? Oops, I'm looking at the wrong thing. At Town Hall. So this Thursday, we have our joint FinCom, right? Uh, no, that's just FinCom. Our joint FinCom is next Thursday. And also, if anybody's doing that zoning overlay districts.
That's the twelfth.
Zoom. That's the twelfth, correct?
And FinCom is at seven o'clock the same day. Right?
Right, it's the zoning overlay, six to seven. FinCom, Joint FinCom is seven. So, okay, we have the nineteenth. And then, the twenty-sixth is FinCom meeting regarding the school district. So I think that would not be.
I'm confused. I thought the school committee discussion with FinCom was the nineteenth. That wasn't Greg's memo, unless I misread that.
We can check that. I thought I read it. Greg, do you know when that is?
So it's, you're, you're meeting with the FinCom on the twelfth to go over public safety and ambulance?
Yep.
And then, on the twenty-sixth is when the school budget is going to be on the, on the agenda.
Okay, thanks.
Sorry, twenty-sixth, thank you.
So we have available the nineteenth for, I don't think we want to do this Thursday.
Yeah, I will not be, I'll be out of the country on the nineteenth, so I can't do that. I could do one in February.
But what's the timeframe here? Is this like, say, five to six thirty, something like that?
What do you think, five to six thirty? Hour and a half? You and I were there two hours, but I think five to six thirty?
I can do that.
Or do you want to do six to seven? I just.
I have a commitment at six thirty or so. It's kind of loose, but.
Good. And, and five to six thirty. And I'm happy to do that, Brian, unless you.
On the nineteenth, I've got a constituent at five thirty.
You have what?
I'm meeting with a constituent at five thirty. Lindsey Banks.
I'm not, okay, no, I'm just.
We've been trying, we've been trying to collect, connect each other for a while.
Okay, so Select Board Conversation Corner will be, no, there we go. Get rid of that.
Five o'clock on the nineteenth.
Five, yep. Five o'clock. To six thirty, in Town Hall.
I can be there for the first half hour.
Under the cone of silence.
I'll be there for the first half hour.
Good. Just no discussions of.
Right.
Okay, good. That's wonderful. So we can ask Tiffany. Hi Tiffany, I see you're there. Maybe we can get Tiffany to.
Hello, everybody.
Happy New Year. Maybe we can.
Happy New Year to you, too.
Thank you. Could we get something posted, either in the Tide, Weekly Tide, or maybe several areas that, that the Select Board will be having a Conversation Corner? Town Hall lobby?
Absolutely.
Excellent.
I'll put it in the Tide and on social media this week. Well, for the next few weeks, we'll promote it.
Wonderful, so that'll be on the nineteenth from five to six thirty.
Great.
Wonderful.
Noted.
Excellent. Thank you, Tiffany.
You're welcome.
Okay, now that we've got that, Select Board Goals.
I'm sorry, we had some other actions that are coming up for the next, that we had originally, it says on the spreadsheet, we're supposed to be discussed at the next Select Board meeting.
Seventeenth.
Yeah, so do we want to confirm, just run through those quickly just to make sure they're?
Good point.
Um, so you said DPW was going to present on the seventeenth, so that's a date change?
That's a date change. So one seventeen. We then have quarterly reviews, which I have that right here. So that's on the seventeenth. We will be getting the Liaison Update Report on the Water Resource Protection Task Force on the seventeenth.
It's still on track, right?
It's on track.
And then, we have the Joint Meeting on the twelfth with FinCom, so on the seventeenth.
So it's the ambulance decision? We'll make that on the seventeenth after meeting with FinCom on the twelfth? Are we going to make the decision on the twelfth?
Probably make it on the twelfth, but the seventeenth is when we would finalize that. And that is all that I had coming up right away. Then I had Goals for Climate Resiliency coming up on the thirty-first. And then, everything else is farther on.
I have a question on the Manchester Housing Authority. Is there a presentation coming up with them? I thought that was.
Yeah, Greg, isn't there something coming up?
Yeah, we need to confirm that, but I believe we're waiting for the seventeenth for that as well.
That's correct.
It may be the first meeting in February, depending on people's schedules.
It's getting pretty busy on the seventeenth, I would say.
Right.
Yeah. But that's not on our action items.
Right, but they were expecting the seventeenth.
Yeah.
When I spoke with them yesterday.
So maybe it should be an action.
That's not our action, though?
So it, again, the question is, is there some deadline that they are trying to meet which requires us to discuss, you know, have a discussion with them on the seventeenth? Or if we delayed it till the first week of February, would that cause them an issue?
There, there is an action that they need to do, but it's not a time-sensitive thing so much. I don't think too much. I can confirm that, but my discussions, they weren't.
If, if that's the case, why don't we put that to early February? But John, if you could confirm that that would not be a problem? That would be wonderful.
And I just, yeah, just remind everyone, on the ninth, next, next month, there will be the Joint Meeting with the Planning Board.
Yeah.
Where you'll, you'll conduct the interview for a replacement on the vacancy.
And that's at six thirty?
Six thirty start, yes.
Right.
So the first meeting in Monday, in February is the sixth, correct?
That's what I have.
January is one of those months where we've got two weeks.
Yeah, there's extra, there's a Monday.
Okay, so February sixth, that I will put that as two six. Right, and then, Greg, you said the ninth at six thirty. That's when they start. I had that our Joint Meeting with them starts at seven?
I thought they were doing the public hearing at seven.
Okay. All right, I'll just put us down at.
Ron, Ron raised his hand here, maybe he can.
Yes, Ron?
Unmute yourself.
He's unmuted. I can see he unmuted. Ron, we can't hear you, I'm sorry to say. I see your hand. Not your real hand. I figured.
Oh, this is, yeah, I can check the agenda, which he might be doing right now.
Okay.
And I think you're, I think we have a point, meeting at six thirty. But I'll double-check the agenda and get back to you in a minute.
Thank you. Okay. Moving right along, we have Select Board Goals. Greg, do you want to start this off?
Sure, thank you. So you have the broad areas, the five broad areas of governance, land management, climate resiliency, fiscal, discipline, fiscal matters, and then infrastructure. Those are five basic goals that you've identified. We've highlighted specific topics under each of those. Three or four items that go along with each of those topics. And many of them do not yet have specific action steps. And I'm not suggesting that we try to do that for all of these, all fifteen items tonight, but I do think it's important that we have some general discussion about the need for action steps and timeline, the deadlines for those. As Kathy appropriately reminds us, it's good to have those, those as targets so that we don't lose track and that we have some accountability. So I do think it's, it's helpful to have some conversations in general right now, but I think to hone them down, it may make sense to have those who are assigned to sort of champion a particular area, a particular topic, that meeting with me and perhaps one or two others, that we flesh out more detail, the actual action steps, timeline, et cetera, so that we can better shape the goals and making sure we have, again, those specific action items with some target dates.
So Greg, process check. So Debbie has created a folder for us on SharePoint where we can update our action items, et cetera. Is this, I didn't see this information in that same place, but if we put it there, then we could update it in advance of the meetings. That, that might be helpful in addition to what you're suggesting. So I think what you're suggesting is right.
Yeah, no, I think that's, that's a good suggestion, I agree.
On the governance piece, I can speak to that. Susan and I are meeting, Susan Beckman and I are meeting on Friday. She has conducted a lot of information gathering around the committees and interviewed the town staff, et cetera. And she's compiling that information and structuring some recommendations. And I'm going to review the first pass of that on Friday with her. Hate to bring up January seventeenth, but we were targeting to come back to the full board with the information and the recommendations for January seventeenth, if it is on the agenda.
I think we'll just have to take a look at that. You know, just aim for that.
Yeah, so that's what we're targeting for that, but.
Okay, I don't know. We got a piece called the MBTS Planning Process or something in PowerPoint.
Yep. So those PowerPoints were a first draft attempt. Tiffany, I believe, has been gathering feedback from people on them. I know, I've sent her some feedback.
I had no idea who to give feedback to.
Tiffany.
I happen not to own a thirty-two-inch monitor.
Okay.
And without a thirty-two-inch monitor, it's unreadable.
Oh. Oh, the plan. Okay, I'm sorry. I was, I was referring to the graphic. You're talking about the, the individual plan.
Yeah.
Did Susan put that together, or the town planner?
I don't know who put it together, but.
So Susan, Susan did, yeah.
Susan did, yeah.
I, I can, I can print it after I've edited it and made it as narrow as possible in Agate Point. But when I'm looking at a document, I want to be able to, I don't want to have to be sitting at my desk. Doesn't matter if I'm sitting at my desk, because I, I don't have a monitor that prints it. So this, as a means of communication, is, at least for me, completely useless.
So I don't know.
We can work on formatting that, so there's good pictures on it.
It might be helpful, Greg, when the collateral is sent out, if it's, you know, put in PDF format and a legible font. That way, people aren't messing around with actual spreadsheets. The spreadsheets are good if, if we want to update them.
One at a time, please, sorry. Go ahead. Go ahead, Ann.
Here, read it.
No, I'm, I'm with you on small fonts. So I think that's the, it has to be legible if it's sent out to the Select Board in a, in a meaningful way.
It, it needs to be legible on a laptop screen so that I'm not sliding across and forgetting what topic I'm starting with when I get to the notes.
Susan has a comment to make, and why don't we let Susan speak to this? Hello, Susan. Unmute yourself and.
I think I'm unmuted, am I unmuted now?
You're unmuted.
Okay, can you hear me? Okay, so I'm, I'm wondering, what document are we talking about? I don't know. Twelve twenty-eight twenty-two update.
The master spreadsheet with the various tabs in it that have.
Oh, okay, okay, all right, thank you, yeah.
Master goals and this.
Yeah, yeah, okay, yeah. All right, thanks. Yeah, that wasn't, well, whatever, we can deal with that, thank you. I didn't understand what you were looking at.
Okay, so we will hopefully work on font size.
It's, it's not a problem with font size. The document is too wide to be read.
Too many columns?
Too many. It's not that there are too many columns. The columns are all useful, but the form. This should not be a PowerPoint. This should be something formatted as a document.
Okay.
In my opinion.
Well, I, I would agree. It was, it was challenging for me to read that. So I used it and printed something else over it. There we go. Okay.
It would be nice if, if what we're given to communicate could be printed so that I can lie on the sofa and think about it rather than.
Well, and, and to that end, I would just say also, if, if I don't have to turn my head to look at documents that are not straight.
Some that are, some pages landscape.
The ones that you sent today were great. I got those, those are all able to be read without.
I think we had some holiday staff vacations that perhaps impacted our normally very legible packet. How's that?
Perfect, because that's exact, and, and grateful thanks to all who.
Chipped in.
Chipped in, yes.
In Debbie's absence, yeah.
Exactly. Okay, so back to Select Board, Board Goals. Greg, did you, did you feel? there were some that we should try to, we, we just went down the governance aligned master plan with department boards committee work plan, and we'll be potentially seeing that with Kathy and Susan on the 17th. The revamped correspondence, crossing out communication policy, we're doing first read tonight, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, then foster cohesion and cooperation on boards and committees. Should, should, does it make sense to go down these line by line right now, Greg, or...
In, in quick order, yes.
Um, I'm going to come in, I'm going to set a time, as you had suggested, to come in and chat with you, how best to go about that. Because I think there's nothing that can be done until we actually have all the, the boards and committees sorted.
Yeah, I think it might be beneficial to wait and see what Susan has collected, et cetera, and then we'll pass the baton on to Becky to drive the rest of that, or that, that piece of it, right? So, if that makes sense, I think.
Okay. Next, we have, so I'll, I'll, I'll make an appointment with you both before and after the 17th. Does that make sense, Greg?
Yes, it does.
Okay, so before and after 1/17. Next, we have Brian, improve and increase engagement with the community, and that's ongoing.
All right, excuse me. I think it's, as I become aware of things, or anyone becomes aware of things, that are community type events, or even if it's a, a large gathering, something going on at the Legion might be, like, there was a, over the summer, it was the, it was a bike ride from Haverhill to the, the Legion Riders.
Well, maybe if you could do a calendar.
Okay, yeah. I stumbled on that myself. My daughter called me over to come over to that one. But just, just, I'll just, as, as I've become aware, we'll send something out. I don't know if this, at this point, is even at this particular time.
Even if we go to add them, I don't know if it's appropriate to have those on a town calendar, but if the select board...
I'm saying there, there might be some private, open, private parties that not necessarily belong on the, on the town website, but whereas, you know, a member of the town government would be welcome as far as floating through there. You know, there's a road re-meetings every Wednesday morning, well, three Wednesdays, three Wednesdays mornings, and then one evening meeting.
So, what, so what would be the purpose? So, I think in order to, there's different types of engagements. There's engagement with the intent of just listening to hear what's on people's minds, which I think the conversation corners are meeting that need. Then the, another reason for engaging is to actively communicate about a particular project or effort.
Right.
Is there a third reason that we're specifically targeting, you know, trying to cover with engagement? Is there a third reason why we're doing it? Because I think the first reason we can cover with the conversation corners, and maybe, like you said, a calendar or something would be helpful, but the listening piece...
That's just, I mean...
Listening is huge, accessibility.
Yeah.
Like every, every, I don't know, during the summer, you, uh, Constance in the Park.
So, I think what Becky is suggesting is, could you take the action to develop, draft a calendar, of here, list out the things, you know, just put it on paper, or whatever?
Not necessarily for public, but, but for the select board to be aware.
No, no, internal memo, internal memo. Sure.
Yeah, in advance.
In advance. Sometimes I find out the day off.
Yeah, well, we understand that.
But, but I think it's, it's valuable to even have a calendar of known events. There are known events every single year.
Right.
And if we could just even put those on a list, then we could see where, where there's a big gap in listening, and we could specifically target a date to fill the gap, maybe.
Okay, and so, Brian, it, it also, I would, I think that it would, Greg would have some good insight into that as well. All right. Greg, before we go on to land management, did you want to add anything? You're muted.
All right. Some of the, some of our projects will, will certainly more specific outreach efforts. So, we will, we will get to those as we talk about those different projects themselves. So, I think, what, what you've covered so far is fine to know.
All right, wonderful. Tiffany noted that the COA events would also be good opportunity, and that's, yes, very much so. Thank you, Tiffany. All right, so moving on to land management, developing a response for the MBTA zoning. And so, that is under A and C. That was Ann and Kathy. We have Betsy Ware here. We can talk about that.
All right, so I think Becky, excuse me, Betsy is, you know, got full grasp of that now.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, and I think you have a subcommittee of the planning board and the select board to kind of shepherd that forward, so.
I, I think this was just to get, get it going.
Launched, yeah.
All right, so I, I'm prepared to say that we have done that.
Yeah, I think we have done that. I, I guess the question would be, would we be the first points of contact for the board as Betsy is looking for feedback, or do, do we want Betsy to bring everything back to the whole board? If we want Betsy to bring everything back to the whole board, then I agree with Ann, this action, you know, this piece is everybody's responsibility, but if there's, you know, some nurturing in between that you want Ann and I to do, then...
I kind of feel, and, and I want the, the rest of the board to weigh in on this, but I, I feel for clarity, if it's brought to the entire board, that that would be better than, than just me two.
Right, we agree.
Is that, yes, everybody?
I'll be getting back to, as we get deeper into this, if any one of us to be walking the streets, someone's going to ask this question about it. So, those are all...
On the same page.
On the same page, exactly.
That's exactly it.
I agree. So, I think I agree with Ann. This has been launched, and now it's just a regular board action to...
All right. Betsy, we will come back to you when we get to one discussion items, item C. Now, the harbor master plan, that is mine, and that action date is, has not yet been set. So, I'm going to talk with Greg about that as well and buy on, although we do want to talk about that after MBTA zoning, in terms of, of coming up with potentially a, a sub, next steps. Support efforts to diversify housing. John?
That was the discussion we had 20 minutes ago with regard to the meeting that we'll have with them on the sixth, where they're reformulating their RFP approach to be more of an RFQ approach.
Yeah, okay, interesting. So, I was wondering how that might shake out. Okay, so you, they're meeting on the sixth, and, and we will hope to hear from them on the 17th. Is that correct? No, 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 we said the sixth.
Too much going on.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Greg, did you want to say something about that?
No, you're coming in.
Okay. Eight, self signaling to ensure town benefits. Brian, and I understand you've been in contact.
Yeah, I've had a couple of meetings with them.
And, and with whom?
With Mark Klevski, their attorney, and Peter Gordow, who is the project manager.
It's nice that you say his name properly. He appreciates that.
I've known the Gordow Construction Company for a long time.
Okay.
Anyway, I think we've had, they're informal, but I get a sense of what they're looking for. A lot of it, I think, Betsy will touch base with some of the, like, the Mass Works. They'll be look, they'll be looking, they're working with Chuck as far as the extension of the town sewer line out to the LCD, and reading with, reading Betsy's memo, whatever we do with the LCD, if we do something with the LCD, that's, that's a step that's going to be, have to be taken. So, they're, we look for that. They've made some inquiries about potential TIPS. It's a, it's a process that they're, they're just, they're, they're just trying to turn over, kick over every rock. It's going to be a phased development over 20 years, all right? And the first phase is what they're looking at. And then there, there has been some discussion about having an outreach, a community outreach, probably in the first quarter.
So, what are the town, what type of, I'm just curious, have, have there been any specific town benefits discussed?
Well, oh, yeah, they, they feel that there will, there will be some ancillary benefits far as downtown, as far as, you know, retail shopping goes, as they bring people in. Obviously, your tax base, commercial tax base is, is probably...
That's undoubtedly a benefit.
Okay, I did tell them that we would, as we go forward, we will be looking a lot of things from them. They have, they're no shock, and there's an expectation that we will be having our handout.
So, how did you guys leave the conversation? Like, what's the next step?
I sit with them probably once a month, okay? Again, it's informal. The, the next big step for them would be, and this is, I think, with them working with Chuck, is the Mass Works grant and the application, which has to be approved by this, this board, okay? And then potentially an outreach program. They ought to think about maybe doing a grassroots meeting with community or civic leaders or civic, you know, I'm going to call them civic minded people.
Do we know the timing around their request to come before this board?
Not a tip. Right now, they're just, they're just formulating and trying to get a, the sense of what needs to be done. I would say that they were talking about, before coming to the board, about just having a community outreach, probably the first quarter.
That's a good idea, and I wonder if, after your meetings, if you might just send a synopsis...
Okay, and I've been talking to Greg on this, sure.
Which is great, and that's, I think, though, to, to, the whole board has a sense of what's going on, and just bullet points.
Sure.
Including Greg and Betsy and, and Debbie, and I don't know if planning board wants...
Actually, just what I do is I actually stop and, and just touch base with, as opposed to putting and running, but I will do that in the future. And I'll probably set up something with them probably within the next two weeks. Try it once a month, to sit down with them.
But can, can you or Greg explain, I've been asked how it happens that a private company is looking for a state grant for infrastructure?
We're the ones looking for the state grant to, to, to put infrastructure up there.
I think it's, it's a common practice in real estate development, if the, if we look at the benefits.
Sorry, very lab water pouring.
You know, the, the overall benefits of basically that state grant to help pay for the extension of the sewer line, that brings in a major corporate tax base.
Betsy has her hand up, so I'm guessing Betsy Ware has some...
Can you speak to that, please?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you, Betsy.
Um, it's very common for a community to pursue grants for not only an individual project, but that whole area will benefit greatly from having infrastructure. You've got a commercial district with little to no infrastructure, not sufficient infrastructure, and it's very common for increasing the tax base to pursue that type of grant by the town for the benefit of the community, as well as for specific property owners.
So, said a little differently, it's the LCD, the LCD district, you know, that's the reason we would want this grant, and this particular company would be the first beneficiary. And I think it's helpful to have a real beneficiary right away in order to increase the probability of getting the money, because if you, if you, you know, just, yeah, if it's just speculative, hey, we have this LCD, and we have no idea who's going to come in, but we need a whole bunch of money to improve the infrastructure, I think it helps the case to have a real customer, if you will, or a real beneficiary.
To that point, you do have an end user already lined up. We have a better idea what the actual costs are going to be.
And the requirements, real requirements.
It's just that this question of tying into the sewer from the LCD has come up before and was, there was a very negative reaction to it.
Um, Betsy, is it, my understanding is that the organization would help to craft the request from Mass Works. Is that typically how that goes?
I've had discussions with the DPW director, the town engineer. I have not talked with any individual property owner in the LCD district, but in order to have that area come to fruition, in terms of a grant, we would need one, two, three, four people signing up saying they would benefit from this, this improvement.
Right, part of, part of what you need to show in Mass Works grants typically is job growth. So, you need to document the number of jobs that could be created, that would...
Temporary as well as permanent.
Both, both construction jobs and permanent jobs, and certainly the new CTS research lab is slated to generate quite a few, quite a few number of new jobs, so it, it could be a worthwhile project. We, we'll need to have them come in and give a presentation before you when they're ready to do that. I would anticipate that in the next, you know, month or two. Then, then we can have a more in-depth conversation about the project and about the application and, and the various benefits, both to a property owner, but as well as benefits to the town.
Thank you. Betsy, did you have another comment?
Uh, yes, I do. I ended up, when I was in Drakehead, I was working with a developer who was working to develop a town property that was acquired with CPA funds for affordable housing, and this particular designated developer didn't think he was eligible for Mass Works infrastructure money. And I basically did the research, wrote the grant, and we ended up getting close to $800,000 in infrastructure money for this project.
Wow.
So, it's very common to do that type of thing.
Good. Let's get busy. Thank you, Betsy.
Have, have we contacted the doctor's office that's there, or are they interested in...
Hooking in.
Hooking in?
I don't...
It would make sense.
As well as the MAC.
Well, the MAC is owned by...
Yeah, property is actually...
Self-managed now, so, but it is a...
No, I think we should get in touch with SLV, see if they'd like it.
Or there?
Yeah, you also, so all the properties, you know, the, the town land up there with your own compost facility will be moving from that. That becomes a, a spy, space that would benefit from utilities as well.
Yeah, I would imagine, in speaking, excuse me, is that the doctor's office, once they have access to this town sewer, they can actually grow their site as well. I think that's what stopped them from being any bigger than they are, is the size of the septic or size of the sewer. So, there is, there is basic value along that line.
If we end up moving the DPW to the compost site, that will be good for the town, too. Okay, so we, we can, we can explain that this is a broader good.
Yes, it's not just for one, right?
Was, was there any discussion of water?
It'll, it'll be both water and sewer.
Ah, it's okay, all right. Seems to me it would.
All right, I'm going to move us along. Thank you. I think next up, we have the climate resiliency. Greg, that is you, and that will be done by the end of the month.
Well, in terms of a synopsis of past studies, we'll have that for you. You, you had the introduction to the village flooding study. We'll, we'll continue, and there'll be an update and more detailed presentation on some of their initial data findings sometime in February.
Okay.
So I'll move that to February.
Yep. We'll just put February 23 because we don't know which date yet.
Okay, not February 23.
Real-time modifications?
No, I'm just having my, I see Debbie writing over there, but sometimes I don't. Two eyes on it.
I'm making notes as well. All right, there's that. Okay, and engage in the coastal zone management flooding, all that, that's one in the same, isn't it?
Correct, correct.
Physical discipline, identify opportunities to right-size service levels. Greg, I will come in and talk to you about that as well. I have.
Right, that's, for the next two months, that's what we'll be focused on with the finance committee for sure.
Right, and, and, you know, plowing through this, the, the proposed budget. So, I'll make an appointment with you this month. And then identify options to impact MERS operational deficit. And I guess we'll discuss that after the FinCom school committee meeting the end of the month.
I mean, it's been discussed in the collaboration meeting. And, and the school is convinced that they need a 4.2% increase. And that either comes out of everybody else, or we find another source of money, or, and, and we have, there are alternatives for both towns.
Or we figure out ways to reinvent the wheel.
Right, have they discussed any structural changes? Because it's, this has been talked about as a, in some of the collateral I've seen, as a structural issue because they're, they have been overspending, right, and tapping into their reserves. So that's, that means there's something structurally.
I, y'all, in, in, in order, in their opinion, in order to maintain the quality of the school programs, they need larger increases than are available under 2.5, under, probably within 2 and 1/2. So we could decide that they should be, have larger class sizes, and that they should have fewer sports, and that they should cut electives. I think that would not be in the interest of the town, and of course, neither does the school department.
Right, I think that what was being discussed at one of the meetings was data, I, I think some of the data that was asked for was around, and this kind of gets to right-sizing the service levels. There are some classes which have low enrollment, but they're very important to the curriculum. And I believe it was a select board member from Essex who was poking at, is there another way to deliver that service? And.
Yes, and, and sent, we could send kids out to the community colleges. You can do some things online.
So I, I think that's the information personally that I'm looking for because I have some familiarity with, with education from, from lecturing I did in, in the university systems and, and teachers, lots of teachers in my family. So I'm just, I, I think we owe it to the townspeople to understand, understand that, that what options they have looked at for delivering those very important programs with small enrollment. And that it's very connected to what you're talking about, Becky, with right sizing.
Right, and I think though, the point that you're making, Kathy, about making sure the townspeople understand or, or not, but, but are given the information of the options that have been looked at.
Yes.
I think that's critical when we talk about.
Because it's ultimately their decision as to whether or not
Right.
the budget gets passed and making sure, I think our role is to make sure the townspeople have the right information, and I feel that information has been requested and not yet provided.
So the question here, without going in too much right now, is, Ann, have you had an opportunity to chat with somebody at the school in terms of what different options have been looked at? Just, we could get a, a synopsis, you know, much like we've asked Brian, but, but, okay, what, what's been looked at? And I'm not asking you to tell me now.
I, 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 I'm, I'm at all of the school committee meetings, and I hear what they're saying, and we, we have the collaboration meetings where alternatives are being discussed. I will, before our next meeting, I will get together with Pam and Abby and ask them for a specific list of alternatives for providing services. Does that, does that fit? Yeah.
I think that's fair.
I think that's, that's really good, Kathy.
What, you know, that, that they have discussed and, and what.
Just options they've looked at.
Right, just about transparency, just helping the townspeople understand.
One thing I can say without going back is that the requirements from the state for aid to, to students who are not progressing, that requirement goes up almost annually. And as a result, a great deal more attention has to be, adults have to be available to, to help.
And these things need to be clarified so that people understand that. I mean, I, I think that there's a lot that is not clearly defined. So maybe, maybe you can get that information as well, and if it could be done up in a.
One, one other thing that is a little hard to make clear to people when they're just looking at the operational budget is that they've made significant investments in special education to reduce the number of students who have to go out of district. And that reduces a, a cost, but it's hard.
Yeah, just all this. I sent you an updated packet with the list.
Around five o'clock, what it was.
A list, right. It's not a list, but not the actual, okay.
Those are just, those are just the renewals.
And there are notes, so nothing's changed.
Nothing's changed.
Okay. All right. Any questions on the consent agenda? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ann Harrison, seconded by John Round. Roll call vote, Ann Harrison, yes, Kathy Bellata.
Yes.
Brian Solacy.
Yes.
John Round.
Yes.
Becky Jakes says yes. Okay, town administrators report.
Okay, briefly, the compost project is underway. Construction is underway at the current transfer station area. With that construction, the transfer station is closed Wednesdays, but it is open on Saturdays. So a little bit of inconvenience for folks, but it is open on Saturdays to, to take people's trash and recyclables. So that construction will definitely see an uptick in the next few weeks with the cutting down of the, of the trees that are in the way of the construction of the new facility. And there'll also be some blasting of rock in the area. So there'll definitely be an uptick of activity that people will notice, but they are, are making good progress and, and we are pleased with, with the work that they've done to date. They've been working primarily on the, on the landfill itself, adding gut to the cap so that they can safely drive the trucks up to the top where they will have their finished product stored and, and transferred into trucks to take away. So, good, good news there, making good progress. We already talked about budget meetings. Just a reminder that the finance committee, you'll be meeting with them on the 12th to talk about public safety and the ambulance. And then on the 26th is when the school district budget will be the focus, excuse me, of the finance committee meeting. I'll, I'll have some more news on this, but some good news on, on funding for some climate resiliency work. Year two funding is underway, thanks to Senator Tar and Margaret Ferrante for security and state funding for Phase, Phase Two. That's underway now, looking at our various ecosystems and how those ecosystems can be enhanced in terms of their health and thus their ability to be a protector or an absorber, if you will, of some of the impacts that we can expect as, as the climate continues to change. We also were fortunate to receive a, a nice award through the federal budget process, through NOAA research grant, which will allow us to do a year three for the regional efforts. And again, that focus will be on building capacity at the local level, both from the emergency preparedness perspective, you know, when those large storms hit, making sure that we have plans in place to best manage those impacts in terms of getting people this, the, the basics that they need, keeping people warm if it's winter, or keeping them dry, keeping them fed, et cetera, if, if major impacts are happening around us. But also building our own capacity at the town and city level for Gloucester and for the other three towns on KPM, building our local capacity as we look towards the changes that we're gonna be needing to make. So good news on that, and as I say, more, more news to come as we flesh out some of the details, particularly in year three. We'll be dovetailing the, the work that Fosse-O'Neal has started. They presented that work on the village flooding project. And we'll be dovetailing that work with some of this larger work as well, and vice versa. So there, there should be good complement of efforts on, on those fronts. So those are the three things I wanted to, to have it for you this evening.
Thank you. Okay, so with that, I guess may I have?
A motion. You have the, the wording.
Well, you can do that.
A motion to end the public session, enter into executive session, not to return to public session under Mass General laws, section 30A, uh, chapter 30A, section 21A 3, to discuss tragedy with respect to pending litigation involving unauthorized use of a right of way.
And not return. Did you say that already?
I'd said that once or twice.
Second.
Okay, moved by Ann Harrison, seconded by Brian Solacy. Roll call vote, John Round?
Yes.
Brian Solacy?
Yes.
Kathy Bellata?
Yes.
Ann Harrison?
Yes.
Becky Jakes says yes. Okay, thank you. Good night, Ron.